Hello, everybody. Welcome to the planning board meeting of April 8, 2021. Tonight, we have a public hearing Zero McGonko Road Site Plan Review, which is going to be continued. Downtown zoning and zoning amendment discussion. And then administrative matters. It should be not too bad. So first, let Emma give the speech on how to join up if you want to listen, tune in.
Thank you, Dale. If anyone's watching at home who would like to join the virtual meeting, there is a link in the agenda on the website, or you can go to zoom.us and enter the meeting ID Alternately, you can also call in using the phone number 16468769923 and use the same meeting ID and passcode.
So Gideon, I apologize that we don't have to open the meeting and then do it, right? We open the public hearing, we just continue it?
Okay, that is correct, Dale. We can just continue the public hearing tonight.
All right, so the Zero McGonko Road Site Plan Review, they've asked for continuing until, I believe, the next meeting again? Is that correct?
That is correct, Dale.
Twenty second, that'll be on the twenty second. Okay, and everything's in order? All right, I'll entertain a motion to move the public hearing for Zero McGonko Road Site Plan Review to 7:15 on April 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Chris, I can do.
Actually, Chris and I.
So Rupert, Tony, I.
Yeah, you can and I at 5:00. Okay, now we're gonna have a downtown zoning discussion, zoning amendment discussion. And I believe we have Chris here. Is he gonna start off and give us an overview of what he's got, or Pete wanna do a little?
I'll just do a little quick intro and just kind of introduce where we stand. Obviously, the board and as everyone knows, you know, we've been working on this downtown zoning stuff for coming up on a year now. And so with that said, the last couple of meetings, we've dived pretty deep into zoning, you know, after our site walk. We've looked at things that we don't like, which we like, you know, we've looked at the site plans for 128 Main Street, compared it to the site plans of 21 Main Street. Everyone knows, you know, we've measured how tall Town Hall is and last meeting, we've had a good discussion about heights, special permits, roofs, kind of all the etcetera. So with that said, after each meeting, Emma and I have been meeting with Chris, kind of on this having phone calls, conversations, kind of, I believe Chris may have kind of watched some excerpts of the zoning of the of our meetings to kind of get a better understanding of what kind of where their board whether the board's ideas were kind of coming from. And so in leading up to the town meeting, leading up to a public hearing on the zoning amendments, on the zoning article, I've asked Chris to kind of come back and just kind of, you know, not present, but kind of have that conversation with the board of kind of where this bylaw stands right now, right? We all, you know, before we put, you know, to put the finishing touches on the bylaw before we advertise it, before we have our public hearing, kind of as a culmination of all the hard work, all the long conversations that we've had. I would say the last four or five planning board meetings kind of concerning downtown zoning on this topic. And so, Chris, I don't think you have a presentation tonight, I don't think it's necessary, but do you just kind of want to, you know, do a little maybe recap of where we are right now and maybe kind of even maybe tie back some of those or pull back a little bit and unpack where we are and kind of go back to that survey and say, okay, you know, these are some of the threads, the common themes that came out of the survey that we did. And some of these are the common themes, the kind of the conversations we had with the planning board and and really kind of this is where we sit tonight and in preparation for, I would say, advertising.
Yeah, sure. Thanks. That sounds good. So I guess I'd say, you know, first, just, you know, want to thank both Pete and Emma as well as the board. It's been, you know, really great working over, it's actually been over a year, Pete, because I remember, because I was making site visits at the beginning, so I know it was pre-COVID. So, you know, we've been working on this for a while. I think we've taken what was already a very good bylaw and have improved upon it. And I think, you know, one of the things that's compared to some of my other projects, I just appreciate getting some very concrete feedback from from the board and from Pete. And I think, you know, we've incorporated all of the changes, all the feedback that we have gotten throughout. The last kind of iteration, there were a few additional, you know, fine tuning. This included, for example, shifting Manzard roofs to be through a special permit as with flat roofs and or other roofs that are sort of not by right. And so we've made that change and the accompanying diagram as well. We made some minor adjustments to the requirements as it relates to articulation elements. So there were, there were a few of these kind of, like I said, fine tuning aspects that we've kind of been making at this last this last stage. I, one of the more significant ones was removing a provision that would allow for a four-story building. It sounded like the planning board was not comfortable with that, and so that was already in the bylaw. That wasn't something we added, but we've taken that out for now. And so, yeah, I think, you know, overall, that's sort of where the plan, the bylaw stands. I think we, like I said, we've been working on this for over a year. You know, most of the focus has been on these sort of more of design and dimensional standards aspects. There were a few other sort of topics that have come up, especially from the survey. And I think we touched upon them. We, you know, haven't really, didn't have a chance to really kind of wrap our heads around them to kind of move forward. So I think it's a wise decision to sort of kind of consider that as sort of the next stage of what we're, you know, where this zoning could be going. And I can talk a little bit about that. I had created a memo that I've sent to Pete. I don't know if the board has seen it yet. And if not, I'm sure he can consent it, but it gives some thought.
No, that's been circulated. All stuff has been circulated.
Okay, so then I, I'll just kind of, again, just hit the highlights of the purpose of this. But the thought, the idea was that there, there were some ideas that came out, especially from the survey and early on. And so I think these are kind of potential ways for the town to kind of consider. The most significant one was whether the actual boundaries should be extended. This was something we asked in the survey. Very few people said no. I think it was something around a quarter of survey respondents said yes, they thought that was a good idea. But most just said they weren't sure, kind of like they're open to it. So, you know, I think we, we explored that a little bit as part of our discussions earlier on that when I've been meeting with the board, but I think, you know, that that's a pretty big change. And I think we haven't had the chance to really sort of wrap our heads around it and and kind of consider the public and the, you know, again, what the public thinks about that. So I think it's a good sort of place to continue looking for a future town meeting. There were two kind of potential areas that came up from the survey. One was on north of, on the north side of Pleasant Street. So on the south side, you have the ADDA overlay district. On the north side, it's a single-family residential district. I think that area probably makes less sense, because I think kind of changing a zoning from residential to mixed use it's pretty dramatic and even if it's a good idea from a planning perspective, I think politically, that's, that's very difficult. But the other area that I think maybe was more promising was to the southeast of the downtown towards Route 135. And that's where there were more people that suggested that that made sense. So my suggestion to Pete, as well as to some of my colleagues, is that MAPC is working with, with the town right now on a housing production plan. And I know as part of that, the, the team is doing a housing opportunities analysis. So I'm recommending that, you know, the team and Pete look at this area specifically to see, does this make sense for future for mixed-use development? And if it does, then it's especially logical that the zoning then needs to be changed to actually allow for that development. I believe most of the parcels are industrial, although I'm not 100% sure right now. So that's the first step would be to determine whether that makes sense. Second step would be to determine what are the actual boundaries. So how much do you want to extend it? I think obviously you want to be realistic and, you know, have something that makes sense. And then the third is which of the ADD districts makes the most sense for this area? At this point, I would suggest it probably makes sense for it to be the ADDA because since that's an overlay district, you don't have to worry about creating non-conformities. It also is the most flexible, because people would, could still develop under the base zoning. But, you know, again, that, those are some initial thoughts I think would need to be vetted further. Another issue that, again, I think could be looked at into the future was there were kind of a lot of, a high number of parcels, especially in the ADDA, from what I recall, where either the minimum lot size or the minimum frontage is not conforming to, doesn't meet the actual standard today. I think as sort of, at least as an interim step, the way we handle that in the bylaw is, makes sense and is totally fine for now, which was to keep them as is, but allow the planning board through a special permit to reduce or waive them. So again, it puts the onus on the, on the landowner to kind of make the case on why that should be okay for them to develop under the ADD. I think it might make sense though to really consider whether it does make sense to actually reduce what the minimum lots are and the minimum frontage is from what it is today, so that more parcels are in performance. And I think, you know, my bias always is with these, you know, unless there's a very good reason to have a certain minimum, you should be as flexible as possible. So that's just kind of my two cents on that. And then I think the final piece was, we did have some discussion on whether the ADDA would be better as base zoning rather than as an overlay district. There are pluses and minuses in either way. I think where I am today is I would probably recommend just keeping it as is. I think especially if you're considering expanding the downtown district, having the ADDA as an overlay district would provide probably the most flexibility. And so I think that's, it's probably fine as is, but it's again, something that the town might want to consider, whether that does make the most sense. So that's, I think, Peter, that kind of covers, you know, what I think are the next steps. And, you know, I think in terms of this actual zoning that we're, I think, now pretty much ready to bring to, towards to a public hearing. If there are final comments or thoughts, we can, of course, you know, make any more revisions.
We're just kind of, I'm sorry, Trish.
I was just gonna say, I don't think it was mentioned, there's something that was in the meeting minutes that we talked about, and that was, and it may not be a part of this move at all, but we had talked about the, the lots along Pleasant Street being zoned industrial and the creation of possibly a zone of light industrial to kind of separate out some of those heavy-duty industries, which we probably really don't want there, and other things that might encourage employment and, you know, things that we want in Ashland that really aren't detrimental to I don't know, the, the environment, not necessarily meaning in a green way, but in a noise or aesthetics or something like that. We had kind of talked about, I don't know where that falls in our, if, if time for that is now, or is that one of those down-the-road things?
I think that is one of the down-the-road things, and I actually, I, since I'm kind of going off my memory, I missed in the last, since I wrote that memo now, I did include that. And I think that does make a lot of sense. So it's, it wouldn't be part of the downtown zoning for this upcoming spring or early summertime meeting, but I think that makes a lot of sense. And so I did, I did capture that.
So like Pete, maybe you can answer this, how, or maybe Chris, how, how close are we to having a draft of what we've got so far?
So we have a draft, and it was the draft that's pretty much finalized was circulated to the board for tonight's material. And I think it's appropriate just to kind of walk through the draft, you know, if appropriate, if the board would like.
Yeah.
Kind of outline some of the changes that were made. And I think for the big things, you know, excuse me. You know, the big things that we talked about at the last meeting, I, I think it would be good for everyone to kind of put their eyes on and kind of go through is, you know, the language that, you know, Chris and myself and Emma came up with when we talked about, you know, having buildings be 38 feet tall, but having that ability to go to 40, 48 feet, if there was an architectural component. I think those are the things that we should walk through tonight and just to kind of make sure that everyone is on the same page. Because if, if the verbiage or the text or language is not accurate or not what the spirit of the, or the intent of the planning board is and wants to be, this is the time to change it. This is the time to kind of talk about, I would say. And so I mean, Chris or Emma, do you mind sharing your screen? Or I can share the screen to pull up those.
I'm unable to think of a host.
Okay.
Chris, I made you a host if you wanna.
And then the other main things I know Chris and I talked about, and Chris, well, the three of us, but Emma, we talked about is we we added, we made the split into the roofs into, which is on page, I'm sorry, which, which roof styles are allowed by special permit, what roof styles are allowed by right? And we just kind of reorganized a couple of things. And so right now, obviously, is the time, we should just kind of go through and review everything one more time.
Sure. So I think that the first change from the last time had to do with the heights, I think, which is, I swear my cursor is right here.
I was trying to, I couldn't remember if we had settled on 48 or 45, with 45 being the height of the Town Hall. I thought some people in town are kind of sensitive to that, about the 48, the Town Hall being 45 and.
How high is the church? Way higher than that, right?
Town Hall is 50.
Oh, okay. Maybe that's, maybe I just said, okay, that makes sense. I had 45 in my head. Thanks.
No, 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 I can, I have my notes. I'm looking at my notes from that meeting.
Does anyone know how much, how high the church people is? 80 feet or something? It's pretty high.
I, I couldn't find plans for that, Dale.
So this highlighted subsections, subsection seven is trying to kind of capture what, what was discussed. So I don't know if it takes a second to read it, if this language seems to capture it, then we can go on to the next one where we can discuss it further.
Yeah, Trish, I have 80, I have 48 in my notes.
Okay. Yeah, I think I was just thinking that Town Hall was 45, but, you know, and that's why I was, that struck me as strange, so.
One question, I mean, I'm just trying to talk this out a little. Examples of such features include a pinnacle, cupola, clock tower, terrace, observation area, and the like. So a terrace or an observation area kind of sounds like it, you know, could be a deck, right? Or some kind of a surface where you could stand, right? So we've said you can go up to 48 feet. Well, I guess that's right. You can go up to 48 feet, but it cannot increase additional living space, right? So.
You could put a 20-foot deck on top of.
Yeah, or, you know, you, not, they don't have to go to 48 feet. All I was saying is like, you know, you can go up to 40. You can, you can have livable space to 38 feet, and we're given room for an additional 10 feet. So you're gonna have, you know, an observation area or a terrace 10 feet above the top of the living area.
That wouldn't make sense, because there'd just be space in between, right?
Right.
Yeah. And I think for, like, and also with a flat roof, because that's how you put an observation area on indoor, you know, so. Which would, and this would be a special permit.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But I know what you're saying. You're saying you don't want the feature to be a 10-foot tall deck all the way across the building.
I'm gonna put a 10-foot box on top of it, so I can put a rooftop deck on it, right? But you're right, to your point, is it's a special permit and we, how would we feel about, the board would have an opportunity to say, we like it, we don't like it, or, you know, like, right?
And, and the, the, the feature would include railings and stuff, so it'll be down to, you know, I mean, they couldn't put the railing 52 feet, 50 feet up. So it would have to be under that, so minus three or four feet, whatever the railing height is for that type of commercial thing.
Would, do you typically have a reference plane for that 48 feet? Like, would you say from the grade plane or?
Tried one.
I think as it's written, it would be how you have a definition for building height in your definition section of your bylaw, so it would be based upon that.
And our building height definition goes to that meeting grade plane level.
Okay. Okay, should we keep going then? Pete, if I miss the next kind of change, let me just shout it out if you recall what it was.
No, that was the big change in this section.
Yeah.
Drawing.
Are those drawings?
Drawing real quick so we can look at.
These are pre-existing drawings?
Those are, those are the pre-existing drawings that have been in the bylaws for a long time, for, not a long time, but these are the, these are the drawings that have been proposed.
We made a change here about the vertical articulation should be at a minimum of every 45 feet, based upon the notes from the previous discussion. We also changed, again, he's a very minor, but the change in the vertical plane, we had originally said a change of a minimum one foot. The discussion from the board last time was to change that to two feet, so we made that change as well.
And then the next big change was the roofs.
Yeah.
Keep on going down, right?
Let me ask you a question, though, about that two feet. You had two feet and a maximum of four feet. And why did we have a maximum on that?
Well, I'm happy to do whatever the board, you know, feels is best. I think the reason I had included a maximum was because I have seen situations where the, the change in the plane is so drastic that it just, it almost creates like a canyon type of effect, you know, we get those sort of.
But you can also have, they may have a gathering area somewhere, like they might want to put a, some kind of a patio in there too, you know? You know, I'm talking about.
But in that case, they could make their setbacks, that's, I guess, what I'm wondering, like, what if they have part of their building setback eight feet? You know, the, the minimum, and then they have the other part setback 15 feet, because they want an eating area there, that's kind of.
Garden area and kind of.
Yeah.
Protected, you know, or something like this.
Right. And we did, you know, we do write in about the front setbacks and what's allowed there. I mean, this was specifically talking about these vertical, these articulation elements, so this is more of an architectural aspect as opposed to sort of the actual, you know, building where you can have this gathering type of space. as opposed to sort of the actual, you know, playing building where you can have this gathering type of space.
Yeah, I'm sure there's kind of, there's room for, yeah, I understa, I understand. It's kind of two different issues.
Yeah.
Do you think it's appropriate to change, Trish or Joe or Dale or, or Lashmi and Deepa? Do, would you like to, 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 to not have a maximum?
No, I, I mean, I can see what Chris is saying. I can picture that. I think I've seen it before where there's kind of this alleyway almost like in between buildings or that, I'm not sure. I was just, I, I think, I think it's probably okay. I think, I think the understanding of it is, is clear. And it doesn't, it's not really about if you're, if you're setting the building back. You know, it, it's not really about where you're choosing to set back your building. It's where, it's how you're manipulating what would have otherwise been a flat facade. So. So I'm okay with it.
Thank you. I think that was a, a good description of it. Um, so then the next one, I believe, was about the building roofs. Pete, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
So again, I think as I mentioned earlier, um, it sounded like there was discussion to have, um, Mansard roof part of a special permit. Um, as before, we had said that that would be by right. Um, so we've made that change. Um, and I. I agree. I'm just accordingly, just to clarify that.
Now on these, do we define anywhere like on these, you know, we have a hip and it looks kind of flat and the side gable and the front gable. You know, they're nice little peaks, but you know, someone could define a front gable as a four twelve, you know, or something like that. Do we have that anywhere about? You know, um, you know, what that slope is or, because you can, you can, you can have a gable and not get the look you want if it's, like, it's a really flat slope, you know, um, can get pretty flat. I'm, I'm just not sure. I'm just wondering if we, i- if we don't have that in there somewhere like, um, uh, hip gable, th- these, these roof styles by right are a, a, a five twelve or greater slope or something like that. If we don't have that in, is it, um, is it vulnerable to be like almost flat and saying, well, it's a gable, it's sloped, you know?
I think, I think, I think it makes sense to put something in.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that number is. Um, um, I'm thinking it's, I mean, you, you want one that maybe any lower than like a six. But I'm just kind of, um, throwing that out there, not really any factual basis and being a little sleepy. You know, I think what we're used to when we're seeing, when we're used to seeing that kind of gable, we're, I think we're, we're used to seeing like an eight. You know, like, like those pictures to me show about maybe an eight. Um, but, but I'm not sure. What's that?
When, when you say eight, just for clarification, is that an eight, you know?
Eight twelve pitch.
Yeah, so it means that for every twelve feet in length, it's going up eight feet in height.
Okay.
So a twelve, twelve pitch would be a forty five degree angle.
I think that makes sense to include and, you know, that, that's a good thing that you noted that it, we don't have actually definitions of what these pitches could be. So I think if we're going through the effort of, of saying you have to do a side gable, um, as one of your options, we should at least say what that means and, and what we want it to look like. So, um, I, I will take that on to, um, you know, look at and figure out what's sort of appropriated and include that in here.
Okay.
Probably, probably, like you said, you know, whatever six and twelve is by right, but some building may, the way they design it, we need to get it down to five and twelve and it still looks good. But they, that could be approved, so it wouldn't be completely out of the question.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, especially on like these scale of buildings, like I'm not sure.
It depends a lot too, how wide the building and long and.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be interesting to know, like, can you go back to the, the other diagrams? Um.
Building?
Yeah, the building, yeah. So, yeah, so even on those, I mean, you can see that like the.
They're like five and six, five or six and twelve.
Yeah, I'd be curious as to kind of what those, what those are, the.
Little one in the lower right corner is more like an eight or a ten.
The lower right?
Yeah.
I think that's a, that's probably a, yeah, I, I think it's.
Going.
Lower left is the one that I'm like, the lower left and the middle left are the ones that.
Yeah.
A six or something like that.
Maybe even a five.
Yeah. So I'd just be curious just to know, like, we're just kind of taking guesses at these in perspective, you know, but to, like, what is that on a building this size? I'm used to looking at it like on a single family house, you know, and that's a little different scale. So.
Okay. Um, that'll, that'll be my homework since I don't have an answer right now for what the.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't either, but.
But that, that, um, I think that's a, I think that's a, a good thing for us to include.
And, uh, just to pipe in, I, um, Chris, I will, I have the, um, I have the drawings for town hall in the, uh, in, in town hall. And tomorrow I'll, I'll pull them out and I'll try to scale them to figure out what that slope is, uh, or pitch, I'm sorry.
If you have the drawings, it's gonna be on there.
Okay.
It's gonna be listed either on a roof plan or on a section, it's gonna be there.
And maybe we could check the twenty one meeting if you have the plans for that, if, if it's on there, on that again, probably good precedent.
That'd be a good, a good comparison.
Which is actually very, basically what this top left one was sort of based on. And, um, it's a little, it looks steeper than some of the other examples that I have, but at least we can kind of get a sense.
Okay. I can, I can pull those off and send those around.
While, wh- while we're on this, um, you go back down to the by right types to, yeah, so. I mean, this is reflective of what's already in downtown and that's what's driven these, these being in here. Is that, is that accurate? Where, where I'm going, right, is like, do we really, do we need to, does it need to be this limited? I mean, we've kind of had Mansard mania for the last couple of years with a bunch of different projects going Mansard. I, I, I don't know, is there other stuff? Is there other options that aren't here? That, or, or, you know, and maybe there aren't, or, or maybe something else wouldn't fit with downtown Ashland and that's a fine answer too. I'm not an architect and I don't know the realm of possibilities, but I'm just asking that aloud.
So you're, you're saying like, because they might, everybody might stick to the by right stuff and it'll all be like that.
All, all I'm saying is, is there another type that either is by right or a special permit that we should put on here? Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very happy again, and I'll defer to the, to the board who, who knows the area certainly better than I do. Um, you know, I, I recall like from my visits on the town, these are what I, I remember seeing, um, most prevalent. But again, uh, if we're missing something and, and you think it should be there, then, you know, again, we, we can add that.
I mean, a, a gambrel would be a common roof type, but I don't know where we have it here in Ashland. I'd have to go.
Yeah. Another one that I think that is, like salt box, a salt box.
Salt boxes kind of are, fit under gables typically. It's just that one side's longer than the other, but, um, yeah, but I mean, it should, it should be doable. I mean.
We are talking downtown. This isn't right, so.
Yeah.
Y- y- you know, like, like, what a salt box really, you know, there's salt boxes you see downtown, but that's because they were built in eighteen twenty usually.
That's right.
Or seventeen seventy. So, yeah, um, anyway, I, I, I'm well out of my depth around this. I was just asking the question is like, is there another obvious choice that we should put on here? Should be in the, either by right or special permit?
Yeah, another one that, the one that jumps out to me as far as just types is a gambrel, but it's just not, it's not, it's not typically used in these types of building types, but.
Where we're, where we're looking at zoning right now, like.
Yeah, and again, it's a little out of my wheelhouse. This, uh, the commercial aspect of this is a little out of my wheelhouse, so I can't quite picture an example.
You're like a good commercial gambrel, like, it's not, it's, there's a reason you can't picture one because.
Barn conversions in small towns, you know, that became something else, but that's not our case. I don't think we have any gambrel barns sitting in downtown Ashland or, or whatever. I mean, it can't be done. I just can't, I can't quite get my head around it, but.
Says that they can grant, planning board can grant any other type roof as long as they demonstrate that it enhances the character. So somebody may come in with some, something that looks really good and that pretty much covers anything.
Yeah, or other roof styles.
I should be, the right should be the ones that really go with the downtown, which is the hip, the gables that way. But maybe like you said, if we say hip and gable roofs, you know, six, six and twelve pitch and up.
Yeah.
Because then.
I think the comment about the.
Kind of fit. We know that'll fit. And then anything else, if they want to squeeze some more floor space and put a lower roof, they have to come in and prove that that's gonna look good. And they could still get it.
Right. So, so what you, so Trish, what you and Dale were kicking was saying, for each of these type, like, let's put in uh, a pitch, a roof pitch and say, here's the bar.
Well, we were kind of looking at those as by, um, just by right ones, you know, I mean, the special permit ones, it's, it has to look right or, or it doesn't get the special permit. But the by right ones, you know, if you just say gable, well, you can have that pretty darn flat and it's still a gable roof.
Well, right, that's, yeah, so.
Ends up looking like a seventies apartment building.
Yeah, so that's why we said we should have a minimum in there. So Chris is gonna look into what, you know, what that.
I was just reconfirming what I thought I understood, which is, we're gonna put a minimum pitch in, we're talking about putting a minimum pitch on each of those three so that you don't start mutating these things, right?
I think it'll be the same minimum pitch.
Yeah. And then, and then if they want to go lower, they have to just show how that works and then they can get it approved.
Yeah, because those three roof types are basically the same roof.
Yes.
You know, they're just turned in different directions and the hip just slices the corner off. So it's basically the same, exact same roof type. Um, where the other ones are very different styles. And I would love, like, like someone said, um, I, I, it gives me a little bit of pause thinking like, okay, is everything anyone does gonna be a gable? But as we've seen, a Mansard roof and a flat roof can be done, the, the gable roofs are a little bit easier to control. The Mansard roofs and the flat roofs can be done so badly that you really maybe want to see a little more.
Good that we have, that those have to be approved.
Yeah, you know, because they are more, it's not like a flat roof is complicated. It's just that if you don't have the decorative properties to it.
It's a box.
Yeah, I drove through like, uh, North Brookfield the other day and, um, and it was just gorgeous flat roof buildings there. I mean, I don't, they're eighteen hundreds something, but just beautifully done, you know? And so I, I was thinking about Ashland as I went through and now whether, whether people are capable of doing a modern version of that. Um, I think would be great, but, you know.
And the modern, and, and this is for the downtown. Remember, this is just for in the downtown area, because like over on one twenty sixth, I think you could go a little bit more modern in that area over there and make it look good. I've seen some, you know, buildings that millennials would like.
When you think it could open up possibilities, like what if you do have a restaurant with a roof deck? That'd be pretty cool in Ashland, but you kind of have to have a flat roof to do it, you know?
But you just have to show it, make sure it doesn't look like a box with a deck on top of it.
Exactly, exactly. So.
Put a volleyball court on a roof.
Well, you have that, you can go up to forty eight feet, you know, for the volleyball.
And then, then who's gonna run and get the ball when it goes over the, the street?
You might have to do tetherball. It won't get away from.
Okay, but I, I think that's, the point was that by right stuff, if you put a pitch in there that is acceptable, then that they can just do it because you, it should be acceptable. And if they want to go low and try to squeeze, you know, keep the, under the, the thirty five feet and still have taller ceilings and stuff, and they try to go really low, then they're gonna have to come in and get it approved. Okay.
Thank you. I, I, like I said, I'll, I'll, um, add something for your review as it relates to pitch. Um, and I, I think that covers everything Pete and the, or Emma and the, if you recall, if I'm missing something else that we had changed at the last, last discussion.
No, I think those were the big points of the discussion that we obviously went over and, um, that I think it just makes sense that, um, that we all talked about, right? And so, um.
The set, this, what about the setbacks?
So we did have some discussion about, um, that, about allowing the plane what to allow for a greater, just a greater front setback. Um, is what I believe. Um, that was actually already in there. So I just, I, I, you know, pointed out to where that is, um, and it, it is there. So I, I think, um, because that came up from what I recall earlier on in the discussions as well.
But are, are, did we get rid of zero setbacks and?
Yeah, the, the setbacks now are gonna be a, a minimum of eight, a maximum of fifteen. And then after our discussion with, you know, Ponce, not Ponce, excuse me, Pleasant Street and the, and the buildings, um, where we talked about putting a special permit in, in a conversation, Chris just kind of pointed it out. But the original eight and fifteen stayed the same.
Is that, that's in the chart that shows all the.
Pull it back up, sorry.
And the floor air ratio still stays the same, which is actually a holdover from our last, from the, from the, from the bylaws that hasn't changed at all.
Right, yeah. So I didn't, I didn't touch FAR. Um, so the be, the minimum and maximum are here and then, um, oh, here it is, can, um, it's provision that allows for a greater, um, greater front yard.
Cause we were trying to get some idea about FAR and where maybe those numbers, and, and this doesn't have to be for tonight, but if there's some kind of, there's a comment there that I've been noticing too, um. That if, um, that if there's some kind of graphic that can kind of show like the two point O versus the one point five, um, and what that means for different sized property. It's like, for instance, like on a small property, like we've been talking about ones that don't even really meet, um, the, the standard property size. It's gonna be pretty hard to, with the setbacks and stuff, it's gonna be pretty hard to meet like the, like a two point O, um, you know, and that because you can only go three stories anyway, right? But on a large property, on a large property that has the, you know, and when you think about the properties, say along Pleasant Street, that can get.
Two of them are fucking.
And then, um.
Sorry, talking about my children.
And then you have the same setback. Now you have, there is a lot of square footage there. You still have the same height restriction. I'm just trying to like, again, like I, I have experience with FAR, but it's, it's in a, it's in a single family home residential context. And so for me to try to understand, like, I'm used to dealings with an FAR of like point four eight, you know, or something like that, which is very different than, than these. And I'm trying to get my head around what those mean. So I didn't know if there was like diagrams or, or a visual that we could look at at some point, just to see what those numbers.
Yeah.
Illustrate with a small site, with a large site.
Um, yeah, I think what I, I, I don't, I think my recommendation would be for this, you know, upcoming town meeting, we, we don't kind of fiddle with, with the FAR. But you know what, I, I'd be happy to, you know, take one, you know, fairly large site and, and show kind of an example. My, my sense, um, and this is without doing it, would be that even on a large site, my guess is you could not get to a two point O FAR because of parking. So if you had structured parking, maybe you could, but my guess is parking requirements is gonna take up too much space that you, that you won't get to it.
Exactly. That kind of starts to eat up. It's, it's hard to a lot of times fit that parking in with what they want to build on it. So like I said, it's more just to trying to get my head around it and maybe helping the other people in the committee to, to kind of get their head around what that, what that number means, um.
Um, yeah, I can pass that along. I can put that together and send something again, more for your review and for the future, um, you know.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's something we want to get in now with these other important changes, but, um, yeah, just so we look at it at some point.
So the, what you were saying is that with the parking requirements that are part of, part of Ashland zoning, that you're not, the FAR. That you're not, the FAR can't creep up that high because you have to deal, you have to consume part of the parcel. The plot with parking. So it, whereas like if you go to East Boston, you don't have those parking requirements. That's where the, those numbers just get insane because you just have every square inch. Of the parcel being consumed by a structure and, and residential space, right?
Right. You can imagine just drawing a line back from your setback lines and going thirty-eight feet up and that's your three story pancake building. If you didn't have to have any kind of.
But, but Ashton's, but Ashton zoning still has these parking requirements. So that's just, it, it changes the game and it doesn't, yeah, okay. I still would be curious to, I agree with Trish, I'd be curious to. To think about that one a, and understand it more, but that, that's good. Thanks, Chris. Sorry for my outbursts.
I, I'm happy to, to, to do that. Um, I, I think it's even, you know, if, as again, in the future, as you sort of go down this road. It, it might even be worth considering whether you really even still need an FAR max. Um, you know, I, I think. When you consider you have your open space requirements, you have your, um, you know, heights already. I, I think there's at least a case to be made about how, whether it's, um, really something still necessary, but, um, I'm not saying it isn't, but it's just something to consider.
What is the open space requirement is for the downtown for these different? Overlays.
I don't recall off the top of my head. Uh, Emma, Pete, do you happen to remember? I'm not finding anything.
I'm still on mute. Trish, we don't really have too much, we don't really mention open space within, within the downtown district. We do have some planting guidelines and some green, in, in some green space, but regarding open space per se, like a, like a residential lot or. A, a percentile of the lot that must be kind of, uh, green space. We don't have that in our bylaw.
Yeah. I mean, in a sense, it's not really about that. That's not how, that's not what a downtown is about, right? That's, that's suburbia, you know, kind of thing. That's not the downtowns that we, so I'm, um. But it kind of raises that question when you have these large lots. You know, what if, what if you did put in two floors of underground parking? I don't know who, who would do that in Ashland, but you know what I mean? It, it's just kind of like, oh. How do you start to? You know, should there be an open space requirement on large lots, say, you know?
I think that, and I think that makes sense, especially when we start talking about the lots down on Pleasant Street. That, you know, any lot greater than, you know, right now we have a minimum of thirty thousand square feet to actually use as bylaw. Unless it's waived by the planning board. So I think, you know, any built, any lot greater than sixty thousand square feet. Then we could add in a open space by law. I mean, an open space requirement. To kind of, you know, especially if there's going to be residential on that property to help promote that kind of use, you know? Per se, take, you know, one twenty-eight Main Street, we have eighteen units there. And there's really no open space per se, right? You're living in the downtown and that is the draw to kind of be inside that building.
Exactly.
It's the same way.
It's not applicable to every situation.
Yeah. And you might have to.
Correct.
In the setback too, on those circumstances, because you might want to put the open space in front of the building. And step the building back further. So that's all stuff to think about. You writing all this down, Pete, Emma, for the next?
I'm writing it down. Dale, good thing this meeting is recorded, I would say. No, it's all stuff, it's all good conversation, right? And it, it leads into those next steps, you know, and I think that's a good piece. That could partner with that, you know, breaking up the industrial into a light industrial to a heavy industrial, right? And I think that also goes down to the point, because I think what we have uncovered is. You know, this does fix, you know, and not fix, but this does edit, you know, what we think of as a downtown district. But if we start to expand it, right? And let's, you know, and it's opened up our eyes to Pleasant Street, right? How does the A district, ADDA link into Pleasant Street and connect the train station, right? And all these elements do add into that fact that, you know, those lots are bigger. They are industrial. And I think it just, I think, yes, we do have to unpack it a little bit more.
All right. So Chris, you'll get that all. Finalized. We'll see that. Any other, uh, comments from the board?
I just think, Chris, I think your help has been really, uh, really very useful and beneficial and smooth throughout this process. So thank you for that. Especially in a time of night that's not my best. I'm, I'm wide awake at five thirty, but AM.
No one else has comments. We have a special guest who's been waiting patiently for about six weeks to comment on this, Mark. Do you want to, I'll give you a few minutes to add your two cents if you want.
Yes, thank you. Good evening and. I can, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing my last two or three meetings I've, uh. Wanted to talk about getting involved in this. Now, I see this being all set up and. Want to get, get the points in there. And all, but I'm just looking at some of these as saying. It's, yeah, you can do, but I like the ADD, I like the ADDA. If we can combine commercial. Light industries involved. In this, combine those two, that way you can get, to get some, um. Some sort of recognition, because I know that. What I read in the newspaper this past Sunday, that Jenny Z is leaving and for that reason. The, the ten to fifty Main Street building is being demolished. Is that right? Peter?
At this time, I would say, is it being demolished? No, I think that, that would be incorrect. The owner of that property is looking and is, um, looking at his options in, in redeveloping that site. You know, he's looking at, um, you know, if the town will be, you know. He, you know, if the town is interested in rezoning that site through a forty R district. Which is right, which is obviously a, a different type of zoning per se than the downtown zoning district. And that would also have to go through thorough, I would say. Analysis and conversations, um, for that, but is, is, is the building being demolished? No, it's not much. That's a, uh, that's a, it's a big piece of property in the middle of the downtown that. I think a lot of people have, um, believe has, has a lot of development potential.
Okay, I mean, um, and I just believe that is what, what I read in paper, I probably read wrong then.
Uh, you, I think Julie Z's bread is, is not renewing their lease. I think that is the appropriate term. I, I did also read that article.
Okay, thank you. And, um. What is the building? Eighteen fifty, I'm, I'm going to stick with, with this building. Cause I think maybe setbacks could help. Is eighteen fifty. Contracted. To have small office space put in.
In eighteen fifty, is that an address? Is that, uh, what's eighteen fifty, Mark?
That's the, uh, the building that we'll walk, the walk around at the, the downtown tour. The old, um. Brick building, going down back to the driveway and walking around by, by Mill Pond. That's across the street.
That historical building?
Yes. Not this, but the, um.
Mill building?
Yes.
The mill building, okay, the mill building, yes.
Is that gonna be worked on as small office spaces? To be either rented out or have. A under five employee businesses come in. Future, future business. With size and tech.
Well, that's a whole different discussion. That's going to be a whole, that whole building is another discussion with a whole nother project with a different zoning. That they're asking for. So I don't think we can answer much of that right now.
Okay, would, would that be agreeable?
What I would say. Well, what I would say, Mark, is that building, it, it, any proj, the project that's being proposed is mixed use, right? And so there would be some, there would be commercial, there'd be a commercial component, there would be residential components. In that redevelopment site.
And the other one was on the other side where that, where the garage is ground floor and there's the building on top of it. Is that going to be mixed use maybe? If it's gonna, if it's gonna be zoned and re-talked on?
Yes, the, the entire property in the, in the first floors will have to have some, have a, a portion of that area be commercial. Commercial.
Can we, yeah. And can we kind of stick to what we're talking about tonight, which is the zoning bylaw?
This has a little bit to do with zoning bylaws. You gotta want to do the ADD overlay or industrial or residential, whatever it's going to be. But that's zoning in character of town bylaws. Yes or no?
Well, it's going to be, that's going to be a forty R, right? Or what is it? They want to be certainly from everything.
Yeah, that, that project, Mark, as it's being talked about now, would require. As a forty R district, which is what the town is, which I believe is, is. It will, will occur is, um. Forty R is an entire different chapter in Massachusetts general law. And, um, and that will have to be discussed at, you know, further planning board meetings and, and, and taking the town meeting. And so, um, it's a little bit, it, 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 yes, it is zoning. However, the, the property and, and the development that's being discussed is really non-applicable to the discussion tonight. Because that has its own separate zoning. Zoning transformation that has to be, that has to take place, I would say.
Okay, now this is, this is going to be it right here and, um. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me the, the liberty to go on and set this finally out of my system. Now, through you, Mr. Chairman. To Peter, Emma. And Mr. Chris of MAPC. I never been one for bringing more housing. I've been one for economical growth. But I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm not trying not to be negative, but I want to make a point out. The zoning part, the, uh. MAPC, MAPC is not just. This housing production. Isn't that right, Mr. Chris Kuchel?
You're muted. Yeah.
We offer a whole range of services, including economic development, general zoning. It's not only housing production.
So, um, and I'm not, I'm not pulling down, which was talked on and all that, but I like the idea about the roofs. The different roofs, I'm more a flat roof person, because I think the fact will make the building look bigger and get more, uh. Small, the offices or business mixed use in there, because the building can be more square. But I'm looking at the housing, but if you go, if you can work for housing coming in. Can it help? To bring housing in for more business and their employees who come off the train. That can come in to work in the town if it goes that way. That's why I'm asking Mr. Chris, the MAPC, if this is not just housing, going to be. Housing for employment and, and, uh, businesses that keep the people in town to work. And to have the college crews, people live in and to stay involved. And grow the town for a future zoning business way of going. I thank you, Mr. Chairman, Peter, Chris and Emma, thank you for working on this. To end this, to end my part of it, not completely. But, but to Peter and Emma, you know, I've, I've been asking these questions. I've been getting involved in this. And I've been giving you paperwork and all that. And the zone base code. Is that still alive and kicking? I'm done.
The, I would mark out, just in response, I would say your, your base, your, um. Your, your, the zoning code that you worked and, and helped to adopt, uh, years ago is the foundation. Of the, of, of the Ashland downtown district today. And so, uh, we are, we are using what you did a cou, you know, a, a few years ago. Um, and we're, we're, we're trying to make it better.
And so now on these, on the new ones we're doing now, we're going to have, uh, obviously public hearing or open meeting, open. Public meeting on this. So once we get it finalized the way we like it and it's all checked through everything and make sure it's all. Good, then just so everybody knows out there, we will be having public. Meet, right?
Correct.
Anyone that wants to comment on this, the general public will be able to come in, say what they think about what we're doing. Getting a tour of Joe's house now. All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I'll touch base with you on the, on the pitches and we'll go from there. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So now. We're, we've got minutes. First ones are from. March eleventh, that the first one. Everybody have a chance to read them or any need a little time or any comments? Changes? Make sure Emma not to put the exact language that. Joe was using tonight.
Which one are we looking at first? There was a January one and a March one.
Oh, January then. I would, I just clicked on the first one, so.
Just the March one.
Let's do January.
It was January twentieth.
Yeah, let's just do them in order, January twentieth.
Okay. So Emma, are you ready for corrections? Okay. All right, I have. Um, line fifteen, there's just, and the, and the is repeat, repeated at the end of the line.
Yep.
And the beginning of the next paragraph, line eighteen, nineteen. First you say single story and then one story. And then we just might want to be consistent, just in those. Let's see. In line twenty and twenty-one, it says the existing granite would be incorporated in building twenty. Would have a granite facade. I didn't know how. Um, I didn't know if there was a better way to refer to that. I was just, I guess you have to look at the plans to see which one is building twenty. Would that just be the right way to do it? They would have drawings attached to the meeting minutes. Do you know what I mean?
So you're looking to add the build, I just add the documents into the minute?
Well, no, I'm just wondering if, if I'm reading this like, like building twenty, like we don't refer to building twenty anywhere else. So, um. I didn't know.
We're on the January twenty minutes, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, there was a massive package that was part of that.
Yeah.
That was, that was not, it was, it was a massive package with a ton of drawings. It wasn't just an agenda. There was a hu, a huge package of renderings that was provided at this meeting, right? Does anybody else call that?
Yeah, yeah, we, we were, they presented a lot of things, you know, so I just didn't know. Cause then later on in a related way, in line thirty-five, it says Yolanda commented that at least building ones. And again, we should probably be consistent. Is it building with a number sign one? You know, so that we. Yeah, she's, she's a consistent kind of language that's being used.
We're building one on the plan, the drawing.
Yeah, exactly. That is, it just starts to get a little confusing. I'm not sure if I'm, um. You know, if I was looking back on these, like what they would.
Right, which is.
One, two.
Which is why including the package would solve it, right?
Yeah, but you see what I'm saying? Like it says building. Number sign twenty and then it says building one, oh, one, O N E.
Oh, yeah.
There's not twenty buildings. There's not twenty buildings on that site.
Yeah, is that supposed to be two?
It's zero, it's zero to twenty main, I think. I think it's zero, so there's like three buildings and it's like zero to twenty or zero to fifteen main. I mean, yeah. Sorry, Peter.
Like the ten? I, I, I'm confused.
So we should, we shouldn't say building number twenty, we should say, you know, confirm the existing granite would be incorporated in building and the building at twenty Main Street would have a, right?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
You can, uh, we can confirm that. The, I'll confirm the address tomorrow.
I just, I have a quick.
Well, and, and to the point, the one, the building that that's being talked about is at the very end, the one that has the master roof. Right? And I'm pretty sure it's zero, but.
Closest to the pond.
Yep.
Yeah, across from the Bay area.
Yeah.
Do you have more corrections, Chris?
I, I do.
Keep going.
Um, line thirty, no, sorry, line thirty-eight, Brandy thanked that, the team, I assume that that should be taken out. And then in the next line, she wanted to understand the application process and D H C D and then back to town meeting and the timing. Yeah, so it seems like some things, there's a stream of thought there, but I'm not following it. And then later line sixty-two, sixty-three, the planning board will weigh in on the zoning change. So the select board will sign the development agreement as opposed to the planning board. The planning board will weigh in on the zoning change. And then if we go down to line seventy-nine, eighty, the select board will sign the development agreement, but the planning board will have the final say.
Yeah, I was, I was on that one too. That's not like accurate. It, it is that the planning board has to put it before the towns to vote. Like we have to sponsor it and say, hey, here's a zoning change, cause that's our role, but it's not, it's not a correct statement of what's gonna happen.
Well, at least you have to do a pipeline review, right?
And, and then for line sixty-eight, I think I would just take that out and put in line sixty-nine, Tricia asked for a better understanding of historical context. Because there definitely was a dis- a, a bigger discussion there, but I don't think it's easily summarized in just that one sentence, you know? So I think I would just take it out, but definitely, you know, say that, and that's, you know, we're looking for a historical context, you know, kind of thing. Um, and then the last one is on line eighty-six and it just says, Michael, the deposit will be made.
So, so row fifty-two, Joe said this governor, there's two Joes here, there's Joe Antonellis and Joe Ruberton. And Joe Mignani, so I don't think we can use the term Joe, right? We, we should use last name probably. And I, just to clarify, I didn't say that. I think it was Joe Antonellis that said that.
Yeah, I'll review the tape and clarify the Joes.
I just had a question. I don't, maybe you guys can find this one and tell me mine. For some reason, the numbers don't come up online, the line numbers. But where it says Lakshmi asks whether the overall downtown streetscape was considered in the design of this project? Does anyone see what that line that is?
Yep, seventy-six and seventy-seven.
Respond to that? Did somebody respond to that?
Yeah, it needs another sentence. You're right.
Because it's just kind of a left hang in there and don't know if they got an answer, she got an answer or not. I think she did, but.
Yeah, I think Pete, Pete answered, I thought.
And then row seventy-two, I, I, this is me, Joe Ruberton commented. And then I asked for more information concerning the financial benefits, whether or without funding in the historical significance. I, I didn't ask for more information about historical significance. I said, I made a comment to the effect that the town, that the building has significant historical significance to, to the townspeople of Ashland. So um, and in terms of asking for more financial benefits, I, I think I, my comment was like suggested that they look at it with I think that it could work with or without the financial benefits that they were talking about presenting to us. But I, I think the, the main thing is I didn't ask for more historical significance in, in, info. I, I just acknowledged the historical significance.
Okay.
And then in documents, you guys, you guys are gonna add the, the presentation that yeah, package there.
We'll add it. Anything else from anybody? Not, I will entertain a motion to approve the January twentieth, twenty twenty-one minutes with the changes we've just discussed.
I moved.
Second then.
Sorry, what, sorry, one last thing, cause like, I'm sorry. Can we hold on the vote for one second? So I, I got a call, I got an inquiry from a resident regarding the subcommittee. And asking about like when the subcommittee was discussed. Is there a reference in here to the fact that, is there, is there a discussion here of the fact that there is gonna be a subcommittee? They were looking to form a subcommittee with the order to select the planning board and the design review committee.
Yeah, I do think that that's the meeting when it kind of came up as an idea.
Yes.
Line sixty-six.
Sixty-six, give me one second. Michael and Yolanda recommend is the planning board design review and the store committee consider trading. So perfect, okay, thank you. I'm sorry. And then in subsequent minutes to our meeting, it's documented that we appointed Tricia and I think it, that, that's in the minutes, so, so there's good connection between this and where we nominated people to be on it. So, okay, I'm sorry for that, guys.
Okay. And then all in favor?
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye. Deepa Mangatay.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Yeah, if you can and I passes five zero zero. Okay, now we can go to the March eleventh minutes. Who wants to start?
Uh, I will, line twenty-five, I only have a couple actually this time, line twenty-five, just given the discussion we just had to thirty-five feet with incentives to a maximum of forty-five. I mean, that's actually, that's, I don't know, did we make that initial decision and then we changed it later? Because it's now, it's thirty-eight feet with just the possibility of a feature
Yeah.
Going to forty-eight, right? But I'm not sure.
Forty-eight with four features or some, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't remember if it was this meeting, that meeting, that, that's what we decided, or if, if we made an initial. So just something to.
Yeah, I can review the tape and clarify that.
Yeah, I just don't remember in what order we decided. Obviously, this isn't our final decision, but I can't remember when we made, when we decided what.
It was at the March, it was at the second meeting in March, which was the March twenty-fourth meeting. Is when we brought it back down, we had the
I think we decided that when we decided just to put a maximum cap on the whole thing, right? Unless, unless you have a feature.
Correct.
My other question was about line forty-eight, forty-nine about the F A R, but I think I just wasn't reading it properly. I thi- I think maybe it's okay. I just was misreading it. So I, that's, so I'm good.
Anybody else?
Just a question, discussion of the Zero Memorial Drive, do we just say no discussion or do we say why there was no discussion? Like we didn't bring it up or like why it wasn't discussed?
Zero more, Zero McGonco. Yeah, we just continued it, so there was no discussion because the, the hearing was not open.
Zero memorial in these minutes. And I think Peter asked for, if anyone wants to comment, to send them to us, so I can add that in.
Okay, yeah.
There, there wasn't a discussion about the project, just kind of an announcement, Peter.
Okay, okay, that's fine, okay.
Okay.
Cause it's just left hanging, no discussion, why or what, no context.
Yeah, we had nothing to say on that point.
Everybody's okay then? I will entertain a motion to approve March eleventh, twenty twenty-one minutes with the changes we've discussed.
So moved.
Second then.
All in favor?
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe, Joe Ruberton, aye.
Yeah, if you can and I, that passes five zero zero. Now they should, you know, we could save some time by if you make a motion, that should be, that should be an I, right? Automatic.
Your last name, Robert Rules, Dale, what's going on here?
A little time, we could save two seconds every meeting.
Dale, Robert Rules Buchanan.
Okay, so is there any announcements or?
I have a few things.
Got a few things, so get that first and then.
Just for everyone's knowledge, um, Zero Memorial, which is also um, in the R T D district. So that's a hundred and eighty unit forty B development. Which is being developed by U G C, which is United, uh, United Group on, um, they submitted revised plans for that project, which are online on our website. And so um, this is the second hearing this upcoming Monday night. Uh, so if anybody interested in that hearing process and or the plans, uh, Emma and I could send those to you for everyone who view. And that's where that kind of project stands right now. And so it is continuing on next Monday night. I am working with Jen. Yep.
U G C's done a number of other projects here in Ashland, haven't they?
U G C, no.
No? Okay, I'm mistaken, sorry.
This, well, yesterday I received renderings from twelve Pond Street, um, the facade. Uh, and so I have those and I will be sending those out, so they probably will appear on our next planning board agenda. I've also asked them to submit samples and uh, sheets, cut sheets of the windows that are, would be rolling up for everyone to, to uh, to be able to see. Uh, and so we will continue hopefully on with twelve Pond Street at the next planning board meeting.
And did, did you check those over and does it kind of look like the same building?
Yes.
The renderings that they brought in?
Yep.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we don't, you know, waste another meeting on, on trying to figure out what
what's going on.
Yeah, you just wanna feel like this is what it's gonna look like when you're done.
No, I pulled them off. Um, I've asked for a couple more renderings, street renderings that would include the landscape. I've also asked for additional information. Uh, and so with a couple, you know, two weeks out from the next meeting, uh, hopefully I'll be able to obtain all the information needed to get that on the agenda. But just as a heads up, hopefully that will be taken care of. Zero McGonco, I, I believe they're gonna have renderings to move forward at the next planning board meeting, just for everyone's knowledge. Uh, I hope we can kind of put that and have their first hearing on, open up that hearing, I would say. At the next planning board meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Emma, we're gonna have the public hearing for um, the porch bylaw and also the design review correction. And so all the postings went out uh, this week, thank you to Emma. And so we will be moving forward and getting everything uh, in line and pre- in preparation for the town meeting uh, on uh, in June. I think it's June twelfth, I could be lying though. Um, I think that's the date that everyone is, is being on town. Regarding other items, I would say today we had a uh, we had a pre-construction meeting for the downtown project. And so hopefully within the next two to three weeks, the crews will start to assemble. And uh, work will begin on the downtown project. I'm sure everyone in this meeting knows that Pond Street is under construction right now with the Mass D O T project. And so we are going to have two fairly large construction projects going on, uh, one on Pond Street and then one in the downtown. And so it's gonna be, um, I think everyone needs, uh, we, we have to ask for some patience, I would say with all the uh, drivers going on both roads.
Peter?
Yes.
On the downtown uh, work, the downtown um, streetscape work, is that at this point, is this phase including bearing those utilities? It is.
Yeah.
So that's gonna happen, huh?
Yeah.
Awesome.
And what about the train crossing?
Yep, the train crossing in which.
Well, they're supposed to make it a, a quiet crossing.
Zone, that is still under, that's still, it's still in the process. Yep, but no, this is utility work, this is buried in utilities, this is streetscape, you know, streetscape sidewalk work. This is what the town has been working on for about ten years now.
And do they say a duration? Do they have an estimated duration of the construction for that, like?
They did not, we, they did not, I, I think it's still to be determined because of the work that has to be coordinated with uh, M B T A and Keolis underneath the tracks. And so I think that is, that's a big piece of it, obviously, because we have to get under the tracks and jack under the tracks and drill. And so um, that work has to still be coordinated, I would say. Other items, uh, Emma and I and Tricia still work, um, are working on the continuation of the housing production plan. Um, and so in the coming, probably next week, I'll be sending out some information to the planning board as that kind of comes together, so everyone can start reviewing uh, those documents. Uh, we had a good meeting last week, uh, concerning H P P, so that plan is continuing to take shape and hopefully we'll have it to this board, um, I would say by early May with a rough draft. The things that have to happen is this board has to accept it, uh, also has to be accepted by the select board and then it's submitted to the state. And so once we get that first rough draft, we'll be sending that out to everybody to review uh, for comments. And then Emma is can, is wrapping up a project on the A D D, uh, the A D D plan, which was on the select boards. I'm sorry, Emma.
A D A.
A D A, I'm sorry.
Not the downtown district.
Too many terminologies, uh, the American Disabilities Act. We, Emma got a grant coming up over a year and a half ago on it, I think. Um, but we had a consulting company come in, they, they took measurements and, and were um, you know, about accessibility. And now with a A D, with a A, A D A plan, now that opens up the town for great grant funding, state funding to help um, make Ashland Road sideways buildings uh, more accessible, which is a good thing. So kudos to Emma for uh, for, for working on that. And then other things, we're, we're still having obviously conversations with Base Seven, Village of the Americas. Five oh one, you know, there's a couple developments that are swirl, swirling out there. However, I, I really don't have too much, too many, I don't have plans to share, but they're all conversations we're having, so. Um, things are, things are moving right along, I would say.
There's a lot of stuff going on.
A lot of stuff going on.
That's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, a lot of stuff, Joe.
I don't mean that, I don't mean that in a derogatory way. I mean, that's like the streetscape stuff alone is a lot, a- and then there's quite, that's, that's a big docket, that's a lot.
The two big projects, the Pond Street and the downtown are two big projects. Well, I'm, excuse me, the public safety building too. I'm sure everyone's seen that and uh, today I had a phone, I got a, I had a phone call actually with the architect, um, or the, one of the project managers for the Mindet, Mindes School Project. And um, that's moving along and we're actually gonna have filings for the Mindes School Project, probably by I would think in June, by the first, the second meeting in June, we'll be reviewing the site plan for Mindes School. And so, you know, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna be busy after this. It's actually kind of nice, we have a lull to do the downtown zoning. But then we're gonna get back into that site plan review special permit kind of circuit fairly quickly, I would say, so. Um, be prepared. Um, be prepared.
All good.
All good, all good. Other than that, everything is going great, you know, hope everyone had a happy Easter. Spring's in the air, you know, masters started today. It's here, you know, sunny, sunny time, sunny days again.
All right, so any board members have anything to discuss, announcements? All right, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting uh at 8:41 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye. Deepa Wang, aye.
Joe, Joe, nice.
Dale Buchanan, aye, that passes 500. Thank you, everybody, very much, good night.
Have a great night.
Good night, everyone.
See you, guys.